So we are back in open session. And Kathy, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda that anybody would like to propose? Nope, okay. So then we will move into the superintendent's report. All right. No student presenters tonight because at that time of year, kids have all left us for the summer, for now. But I always want to share with the board, particularly this time of year, I know the board is interested in student enrollment. So what you have in front of you in Board Book is our enrollment as of right now. And we do tend to get continued enrollment over the course of the summer. Our principals actually looked at the student assignments for kindergarten placement, which is often our most significant piece of looking at our new enrollments, obviously are the majority of all of our new enrollees. And so what you have in front of you is some comparative information about overall student enrollment, the kindergarten assignment specifically for this coming year. And then you have some information about how we use our student assignment process and make the assignments. We use, as you know, we use an algorithm that takes into account the students' walking distance from their home to the school, and also the capacity of each school with our goal of balancing enrollment overall. You'll notice, too, that our kindergarten enrollment is up fairly significantly compared to the past two years. So we see that as good news. It's a nice increase in enrollment. There are certainly districts that are talking about seeing declining enrollment. There are districts that have been worried about declines in enrollment since the pandemic. So it's good to see a healthy enrollment for our kindergartners moving forward this coming year. Any questions about student enrollment?
The only thing that just recently popped up, looking at the more detailed information, is with kind of that southeast corner, it is pretty split between Central and Blythe. And I know the triangles in here indicate the siblings, and we try not to split families and stuff like that. I'm just kind of curious, has there been any outreach to us on one school over another?
No, not related to that. We had one family earlier this school year talk to us about crossing the train. It is something we've taught, crossing at the train tracks, something we have talked to the village about. We did actually distribute all new students who are south of the train tracks down in that quadrant that you're referring to to go to Central.
Oh, okay.
But you can see there are a number of families that already have a sibling assigned to Blythe, or families that have requested Blythe, or families that would prefer. So once the assignments are made, families do have an opportunity to request a transfer. The walking distances are pretty similar, but it does seem that students who would leave from this area and go up to Central would cross in the center of town, as opposed to maybe crossing at some of the individual, or the sort of one-off, I train crossings, I'm not sure what to best call them. But no, it has not been something I have heard from families about, even with the number of students that are already assigned to Blythe that you can see there.
Okay. I was just curious, if anybody from that walking distance perspective, I didn't map it out myself, it felt pretty equal, one you're just going north, one you're going west, but I just wasn't sure if anybody had reached out at this point, if they'd been notified of which school they're going to.
They'll be notified by June 30th.
Oh, so we haven't sent them?
Yeah, right, families don't know, yeah, this information yet.
So then, yeah, maybe later.
Right.
All right, okay.
And we tend to be fairly permissive with transfers, so as long as the balance of enrollment, and right now the balance of enrollment is good for that. The other thing on our superintendent's report is Pam Shaw's retirement. So Pam has been celebrated, we've been celebrating Pam, Pam's been celebrating. I do say to Pam occasionally, "So you feeling kind of bad right now?" She doesn't mean that. No! But as you know-
I wouldn't either, so don't worry about it.
We've had a great year, and thank you to the board for allowing us the opportunity to hire Nora Garrity as the Associate Director next week. Nora, you're the director.
So I just re-put myself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Been signing off that way, I think, recently. But certainly want to wish Pam a fond farewell, and just tremendous years of service to District 96. And I think we talked about this when we hired Nora, that Pam really, I think, pulled so much responsibility and leadership for really transforming our programs for children that need special education supports and services. You know, for the most part, families are really pleased with the supports and services they have. We know that it's a challenging, you know, it can be a challenging situation, but Pam, and now with Nora, and now with Nora taking over, we know we will continue to be in good hands, but want to thank Pam publicly for her tremendous service for Special Education District 96.
Thank you so much. This is her last board meeting with us, so.
So what are you gonna do with your Wednesday nights now?
We'll still be here, so you're welcome. We've got plenty of seats, so.
We do get a lot of viewers on YouTube. There's one more click. Get those clicks up. I know sometimes, well, I'll move on, sometimes people wonder what we do in the summer in a school district. So I just wanted to share just a few highlights, and a lot of these fall in our teaching and learning area, as they should. But I know our kindergarten team was in just last week, continuing to reflect on how the full-day experience has been for our students, and making some revisions and thoughtful considerations about curriculum and instruction, so that was really valuable. Our middle school English and Language Arts Department is going to spend some time together doing some curriculum work this summer. Obviously, we will have summer school, we will have all of our new teachers joining us, the August 15th, 16th, and 17th, for three days of mentoring and induction, and then ongoing work with mentoring. Actually, our leadership team spent two days in work with our Catalyst for Educational Change, doing work that's referred to as empowered teams, that's work that we'll be bringing to each of the schools and to our grade-level teacher teams, just to continue to work at refined practices for collaboration, focus on student data and student learning. Really is a powerful practice for teachers to engage in, and there is really some art and some science to it, and so some additional professional learning in that area will be wonderful for our staff for the coming year. So if anybody has questions about summer, it is always busy. I know you can tell by just walking down the hall, also new lockers coming in at Hauser, and the auditorium project that has been talked about for years and years is underway, and that's exciting, too. I said I was in there this morning and was shocked to see how gutted the auditorium is. I didn't know that quite the level of extensiveness of that work. So you're welcome to take a look at it tonight on your way out. But tech pointing going out at Hollywood, and the construction project continues at Blythe, so there's something going on as we knew would be happening at really most all of our schools. But things are going well and on schedule, and I've heard great things even from the principals in the buildings, like people are doing a great job, it's moving really quickly, people have been clean, friendly, and not maybe as much as a burden as we thought it would be. And then the one other thing I have included in our superintendent's report is the School Board Governance Recognition application. So this is something from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Actually, this came up when the board did their self-assessment two weeks ago, as something that this Board of Education should consider making application for this level of recognition. It just really points out, I think, the outstanding job that the board is doing around governing District 96. A lot of, this would include a lot of links and information about our strategic plan work, but also some of our facilities work, and then your own work as board members, in terms of some board training, et cetera. So I don't know, Wesley, if there's any more you'd want to say about that?
The only thing I'd add is, the representative that was with us for IASB for that self-assessment heavily encouraged us to apply for this. As we were going through all of those self-assessment topics, we hit on a number of the things that are in this very lengthy application, and she felt very strongly that we clearly articulated sort of the vision that IASB has around effectively governing a school district. So we were heavily encouraged multiple times to apply for this, and I think we were all pretty much in agreement that we should. So it looks like Kathy, you've already gotten, I just see somebody, it's like, "I have submitted my files, but we haven't filled out all the narrative stuff," so we're just starting, we're just in the information visual gathering, whatever, attachment gathering.
I think what you have here is a blank application, just so you would see the elements of the components of it, but there's a draft version underway, so.
Okay. Quite a few things for anybody that wants to look at, just the high-level bullets and kind of what they're looking at there. And then I assume, once we have the application filled out, we'll post that in here so that others can look at it, or?
Does it require board action to approve it once it's due August 1st?
August 1st, yeah.
So we'd probably work on it in the next couple of weeks, submit it to the Illinois Association of School Boards, obviously share it with all of you, but I do, I think it's recognition that would be much deserved, and even just going through the component parts, there's a lot of work that the board has been doing in these areas.
And it's a two-year thing, so you would reapply every two years, and it's basically an emblem or something that we can say, "We met all these criteria." So it's like an industry-standard type recognition, which I think would be really good, and something to keep us aligned on, too, as we're talking about these, you know. We do it to effectively manage, govern the district, but also to strive to be the best governing body we can be, based on the principles that have been set by people that have identified these standards, so. It'll be good. Hopefully, we get it.
All right. That's it, that's the superintendent's report.
All right. We do not have the board secretary tonight, and I did not confirm if anybody else wants to be acting secretary, so I'm just, Joel, do you mind reading the consent agenda as Vice President?
Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the previous meetings. These were May 3rd, the organization meeting, May 17th, the public hearing, and then May 17th, the closed session. It also includes the personnel report. We have a special guest here today. We also have the Pabels' pre-list from June 21st, and the Pabels' pre-list from May 31st, the West 40 Safe Schools contracts, and a district plan for consolidated federal funding.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like removed for further discussion? Okay, if not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the board secretary, Vice President?
Some of them.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes?
And then I'm just going to interject from it, because we include under consent agenda the personnel report as presented, and I had shared with Allison that it's not super ceremonial and exciting, but we're very excited to welcome Allison Buzzard as our new middle school art teacher. And she said, "I think I'd like to come to the meeting when you approve me of the personnel report." So welcome, and welcome to District 96, and thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here.
No, absolutely thank you for coming.
It's great to meet you.
You're one non-required participant tonight. All right. Anything else you'd like to say, what do you have there? Platformer?
No.
No? That's fine. Just want to give you the opportunity?
She's a beautiful portfolio of really amazing student art projects that she's done, that you will have an opportunity, and especially because all of your students will eventually go through Hauser and middle school art, but she student-taught at Brooks in Oak Park, and shared with me some beautiful fiber arts and textile projects, and kids making clothes and decorating jeans. And then April had shared with me a different project, where kids brought in pieces of old clothing and wove them all together, and wrote messages on the pieces of their clothing, and really created this very sort of memories and information and big ideas from kids, and wove that all into one beautiful project. So just her examples were really very engaging for students, we're sure, and exciting for the school to have those opportunities.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Do, doesn't appear, but do we have any representation from, or anything from Riverside Education Council for tonight?
No.
Nope, okay. Any board member comments on anything fun and exciting, or maybe not, that has happened recently?
It's been a while since I've been to a performance at school.
Yeah. The Field Days sounded, from multiple schools, sounded like they were a massive hit. I remember, most people had those. Kids always enjoy those. I'm trying to think what else, all those year-end celebrations and everything, didn't have any big performances, just close-out time, it seems like. All right, we can move on. Old business, we have some extensive reviews related to our strategic plan, so since we didn't have the COW meeting in place of the self-evaluation, and we're not going to have a COW meeting because of July 4th holiday, some of this, a lot of this content, all of this content, is really kind of committee-of-the-whole-type-stuff, but we put it in here so that we can close out the year, and then we'll kick off with new goals and everything in the fall. So I will pass it off to Nora, because she's getting up.
And we're going to start with the social-emotional learning curriculum piece.
Yes, okay.
And we decided to take the COW format here and have-
Sure, yeah.
Does she need a microphone, or can we move the one in front of Kathy here, or maybe just?
That's what won't amplify, but I'll make you-
Don't forget about, yeah.
Not for YouTube.
For all the viewers.
Yeah, probably.
Who'll be able to hear. All right. So, excuse me, as many of you know and might be able to recite a lot of this information already, because you've heard a lot about it over the course of this year, but I know we have a couple of new members tonight, I just wanted to provide kind of an overview of what the process was for reviewing our social-emotional learning curriculum at the district level, reviewing it, and then piloting some new programs, and then making a recommendation to the board for what we would like to move forward with. So, let's see if one of these buttons works. Any ideas?
It usually-
Dawn, any suggestions? Or you could just advance it. All right. So related to strategic plan goal two, which we'll also talk more about later in this meeting, just as a reminder, there were three strategies that we really looked at in terms of creating that safe, secure, and inclusive learning environment. SEL integration with core instruction was number one, students that are in learning, and then culturally responsive approach to teaching were the other two. So the SEL Action Team has been kind of driven by this goal and these ideas as they move through this work. And then the SEL Action Team belief statement, again, down there, that I will not read to you, but just, again, encapsulates kind of what drove the work to try and find the SEL curriculum that would be a good fit for the district. The Castle standards are the collaborative for academic and social-emotional learning, kind of the gold standards when we're looking at social-emotional learning. Those drive our goal statements for District 96 students, and this is what the team really came up with, of what do we want to be able to say that all of our District 96 students are able to do in this area when they leave our district. So to that end, the SEL Action Team undertook the project of reviewing the SEL curriculum. It started, actually, May and June of last year, that they identified eight different programs for more exploration, that kind of warranted more exploration. In the fall, as you may remember, we reviewed those programs for feasibility, alignment to district needs, selected four of them to come in, either in person or via Zoom, and present to our curriculum review committee. And those four were Ruler, Collaborative Classrooms, Fly5, and Second Step Digital. So the committee that reviewed them, reviewed and then heard these presentations from these four vendors, was pretty comprehensive. It was a very close experience up in the conference room and the district office, with all of us there listening to these presentations, representing all of the elementary schools and the junior high. And we also had our SEL consultant from DuPage RRE, Sharon Fries, who's been doing, working with us, working closely with us through this process, too, she also attended. So those four programs, each presented to us, each attendee was using a rubric to kind of rate each program on these five areas, and then after each program, we also had discussion amongst team members to get, you know, elicit as much feedback as we could. Going then with the rubric scores, there were two programs that really stood out dramatically compared to the other two. Those were Fly5 and Second Step Digital. They just rated consistently higher across the board in terms of alignment to our district's goals, and the connection that teachers felt to the material and to the kind of usability that it looked like they would offer. So continuing then in that timeline, we, in January and February, looked at evaluation criteria that we'd be using as we look at these two programs, Second Step Digital and Fly5, recruited participants, and then in March, through really the last week of school, these teachers that are listed here all were participating in the curriculum pilot. What I do want to say is, after the four vendors presented to us, and we were discussing the pros and cons of each program, what we realized with the participants from the junior high specifically, was that none of the programs were really going to meet the needs of the junior high, for a variety of reasons. One of the chief ones is schedule-wise, and when in the day is this going to happen at the junior high? That's a barrier for junior highs and high schools, kind of universally, that that finding a time is just more challenging than the flexible schedule that the elementary school can offer in comparison to a junior high, where it's, you know, kids are moving class to class, period by period. But also, the curriculum themselves, just, again, it's kind of a general challenge. They struggle to engage junior high students and present the material in a way that is meaningful and relatable, so that it is an effective use of time, because that time is so precious, especially in the junior high. So for the pilot, for the purposes of the pilot and looking at the curriculum, we limited it to K5, and then at the junior high, they do have a number of activities and SEL-driven components, you know, to their school schedule as it is, but we're also working with Sharon Fries and with the building leadership team to look at, how are these SEL components integrated into instruction throughout the day? That honestly is really the gold standard for SEL, and it's something that all of our teachers are working on, K, pre-K to 8, but specifically at the junior high, it is even more of a focus, because that is the, that's the mode of instruction that is available, given the existing schedule. So the pilot then looked at this group of K5 teachers, and as I said, each teacher spent seven weeks with each program, so everyone got to try both programs. There are some key differences. Second Step is entirely, Second Step Digital is entirely online, so there are no shared resources. Fly5, as you may remember from a previous presentation, I think in March, does have many physical materials with it, and did charge us, and Second Step did not charge for the pilot program. Fly5 did have a cost associated with it. And so to keep those costs down, teachers shared kits across grade levels, but had access to the materials and lessons for students. Each group of teachers, after each seven-week session, excuse me, teachers participated in online feedback first, and then we met, as many as possible, met after school. For each of our pilots, you know, we had more than 90% participants, but it's hard to find a time that 100% of people can attend for group discussions of pros and cons. And then we had some follow-up questions to send to both programs, and got quotes for the financial piece of it as well. It's important to note, though, that the teachers did not have the financial information when they were deciding the programs. We didn't actually get the final quote from one of the programs until just last week. So all of the feedback the teachers had was based solely on their implementation in the classroom. So, given that, I shared just some of the results and some of the questions that we asked, just to highlight kind of where the differences were most stark between the programs. So for Second Step, lesson materials were easy to prepare. That was significantly, had significantly more agreement than with Fly5. There was a lot more sense of Fly5 being a cumbersome program in the classroom with a lot of different components that were difficult to manage. Lesson activities were reasonable for the amount of time estimated. So that's from the teacher's perspective. If I plan for this to take a half an hour, is it going to take a half hour, or is it going to take 10 minutes, is it going to take 45? Second Step hit the mark much more consistently. Also, looking at student engagement, responses for student engagement with Second Step lessons were much more consistently positive than with Fly5, as well as with lessons being seen by teachers as applicable to specific issues and school deficits that they had deserved throughout the year with their students. That Second Step was hitting that mark, again, a little more consistently than Fly5. And then in terms of cultural representation, they, our teachers responded that both programs really had a good, you could tell that both were making an effort to represent a wide range of students, families, experiences, backgrounds, et cetera. Specifically with Second Step Digital, since the district has used the original version of Second Step, teachers are, some of the teachers who were in the pilot program were familiar with, like, the original version of Second Step, and they could say, without a doubt, they saw that there was a much more effort put into making sure that it was a much more representative curriculum than the original version. And then finally, the, one of the key questions asked was just to rate your anticipated reaction if we were to choose basically Second Step or Fly5. And as you can see, you know, it's generally positive to neutral, or positive to neutral for Second Step, much more of a range for Fly5, a lot more hesitation. And then, if that was up to you, which would you pick, two to one with Second Step Digital over Fly5? So with that in mind, we are proposing that we move ahead with Second Step Curriculum Four, grades one through five. With both programs, Second Step Digital and Fly5, all of our kindergarten pilot participants, kindergarten teachers, were united in saying that they really had significant concerns about both. One, there was much too little, in terms of activities and content for students, that it was just, there was not even anything to kind of latch on to. The other was way too overwhelming, and huge wordy slides with language that was just enough to make any kindergartner just kind of check out. However, our Blythe Park kindergarten team had on their own, with Kazmir, been implementing the PAST curriculum this year, just as they had seen a need in their kindergarten classrooms. They were familiar with PASTs because our early learners used that curriculum and have for some time. And it's gotten universally great reviews from all of our staff members who have implemented it. So we are going to be recommending that we stay with PASTs for kindergarten and Second Step Digital for first through fifth grade. In terms of the cost for this, Second Step Digital, we asked for a quote for three years, because there is typically a discount associated with that for a multi-year quote versus single year. They operate in a license, where you buy an annual license for each building, and then as many classrooms as that building has year-to-year, that's how many, you know, you can have as many as you need in each building. So for three years of all the licenses we would need for our elementary schools, we're looking at that $23,756. There's a one-time cost for materials. One of the concerns the teachers had in the pilot was, the digital is nice, but we do need some things in the classroom, we need some visuals to reference day-to-day, we could make them ourselves possibly, but is there anything that goes with Second Step Digital? And they will include the Spanish and English language posters that go along with Second Step, as well as teacher lanyards with that language as well, for that one-time materials cost. PAST operates just as a curriculum kit, so you buy the kit, one for each classroom, and there's no license associated with it, and they're sturdy and durable and have lasted our early learners for some time, so we anticipate that our kindergartners will hopefully not be much tougher on them than our preschoolers. And so the total projected cost for this, at this time, that was covered for the next three years, would be $33,242. That also represents, if you do the math on there, it doesn't exactly add up, because Second Step also includes a 10% discount, that's not represented in there, and they also have sales tax, that's not captured on there, but it is all in that $33,242 number. Any questions?
So the PASTs we are already using and regularly continue to use, we just need more stuff.
We just need more kits, because we're using it on early learners, but we need the full kits for our kindergarten classrooms.
And I'm just curious, when we looked at engagement, like, how was, how were the teachers viewing, how was engagement defined? Like, the kids weren't bored and meandering, they were just, like, was it purely just, they were clearly more involved and kept their attention?
It was, in the discussion, in the question itself, it gave examples such as, are students- We, in the discussion, in the question itself, it gave examples such as are students participating in the discussion? Are they making connections to their own experiences? Are they completing the activities? Are they excited when it's time for this in their schedule? You know, they all have it in their daily schedule. They know when it's coming. So those were kind of the general criteria, but in the discussions with the teachers, student engagement was definitely, one of the highlights of it was that length of student discussion and hearing from all the voices in the classroom. That it wasn't just the same two or three people who you can count on to carry any discussion anytime, any day of the week. It was people really being drawn out by the activities and by the content to say, oh yeah, this is something that, you know, I, I think this is something that also makes sense, you know, talking about this experience, it kind of like something that happened to me or something that happened to my sister, you know, just kind of making those connections to their own lived experiences.
Yeah. And my last question is, I guess, not directly related to like the approval here, but just the comments that you made around the content not really fitting the junior high, like that makes sense. And then you answered the main question I had, which is the golden standard is just to embed it. So then, so then I changed my question to, are we embedding it at the middle, at the elementary school level? So is it both we're targeting because they need more of a targeted and then embedding it so that it's more?
It is, it is the, the goal for, for all of our teachers to be doing it seamlessly throughout the day. To know these standards backwards and forwards and to just have it be a part of the classroom. That's part of the responsive classroom approach that is, those are, that's built on those strategies of how are we embedding, laying, layering instruction on top of this foundation of social emotional support and the classroom community.
Yeah.
So it is becoming more of a focus at the junior high because this is more of a focus at the elementary and we are really trying to have everyone be, you know, unified around the strategic plan and this is goal two and this is what the work looks like for goal two. So yes, it's a goal for all teachers, but it's maybe a little bit more task at the junior high right now because of the, you know, there isn't, we don't have a tier one curriculum that everyone is doing at the same time as the elementary is. Does that answer that question?
Yeah, and like, so, so the way I'm reconciling this in my head right now is just the younger kids probably need a more clearly delineated box to do this in and then the teachers can put in their own stuff. And then we've had conversations about the responsive classroom training. That's a whole separate thing than this. So this is a more dedicated thing for the younger kids to try to help them understand the subject.
Like actual content and, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess it was kind of surprising to me that to find out both of the vendors that we picked for the middle, I guess, didn't really have a great offering for middle school or for the younger kids. I'm just wondering, was, was that a surprise or is that kind of fit with instruction?
I would say it was less of a surprise for the junior high. That's pretty, pretty, like I said, it's, it's, it's a challenge. It was a challenge in my previous district. It's a challenge with kind of anyone I know in the junior high realm of finding a program that A, you can fit into the junior high week and B, doesn't just immediately get written off as something that's too childish or get raised concerns for something that's too advanced, you know, for this age group. It's a, it's a tough needle to thread, so that was less surprising. I was a little bit surprised that the reaction was so unanimous for our kindergarten teachers about the two programs that we selected because they are geared a little bit more towards that younger group. But because it was such a shared, you know, we had a good representation of kindergarten teachers and it was like they were meeting each other for the first time at this conversation, like, oh yeah, that was my experience too. I thought it was just me, but it was really felt universal in that kindergarten classrooms that these weren't really meeting the mark. So that was a little bit more surprising, but I think the fact that we're, you know, have this experience with Pats was a really nice kind of elegant solution to it of, oh, well, we know that this has really been very effective and been very successful with our early learners and then with Blythe in the second semester and so.
So does, does Pats provide something for older kids or?
They don't have the same, they have, they are more geared towards that younger age. So I think, I believe they only go maybe up to like a primary and the elementary years and definitely not up through like middle and.
So yeah, I don't think they were included in the evaluation.
Right.
From the, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess that's why.
I think they just don't, yeah, they didn't have the, the full range of grades. So they weren't looked at for the whole district. Other questions?
Just to like expand Wesley a little bit on your question, I met with Nora about and Martha about this last week and last week, two weeks ago, it doesn't matter. And I had asked that about junior high too, but the teachers are all, the, all the teachers in the district are involved in the professional development as it surrounds the curriculum.
Yeah.
So that the teachers, even though it's not implemented the same way one through, in like as, as it is in first through fifth, it's still, they're going to be using the same terminology and it'll still like kind of flow. So the kids who started with it will still have it.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I had thought the same about junior high.
Because we're trying to, because a number of, I don't remember what the numbers are, but like we, we do have a good amount of certified staff that have gone through that formal.
Responsive classroom.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which, because I remember having that discussion that it actually happens the last two weeks of summer.
Yeah.
So it's not really during the school year and so scheduling can be a challenge and all that kind of stuff. But it, but we're still taking those concepts to your point and whomever, you or Angel or whoever is putting it into the professional development.
Right.
Some version of it is getting out there.
It is on our PD schedule and to that point, I think, I'm, I think we have eight teachers from the junior high who are going to, to
This August?
Responsive classroom this summer.
Nice, okay.
Yeah, there is, you know, it's, it's not that it's being ignored or anything at the junior high level. It just looks different because it's a different.
Hitting it on multiple levels almost is kind of what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Marla.
So this is set up then as a board action, as a company?
Any other questions? Comments? Nope. Okay. So then, is there a motion that the board approve adoption of Second Step Digital for adoption by our first through fifth grade classrooms district wide? In addition, the SL, SEL action team is recommending Pats SEL curriculum for adoption by our kindergarten classroom wide.
So moved to second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Varsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Kalik?
Hi.
Ms. Clouse?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
And Mr. Mirhead?
Hi.
Motion passes?
All right. Okay, so that one was technically old business for approval. The next item, revised strategic plan executive summary is kind of moving into that committee, the whole version. So this is just goal update.
Right, and what we're going to do is the, we made some revisions over time to the executive summary. That'll be embedded really in the scorecard, but, but that document is there for the board to refer to and hopefully it's clear where the changes have come in. So Angela's going to start with the goal one updates and the scorecard specifically.
All right, so we're going to look at the strategic plan goals report card. But the terminology between the report card and the executive summary is the same. So if you were to go back and forth and compare it, you'll see the same strikeouts or the same blue font to describe, the strikeouts describing anything we might have changed, the blue font describing anything that we've added just so that you have a revision history as we go along. So starting with goal one, student growth and achievement, ensuring high levels of learning for all students. There are a number of key performance indicators for goal one. Originally, the first indicator was that we would utilize the kindergarten individual develop, individualized developmental survey, the kids survey, which the state requires us to do one time a year. And the original KPI was that we would do it, you can do it three times a year and we, I had decided that we would do it three times a year and that's how we would monitor our kindergarten growth. And talking, as most of you know, and talking with our kindergarten teachers, that wasn't going to be the best use of their time, nor was it going to be the best way to observe our kindergarten students' growth and to evaluate how the full day kindergarten program is going. And so we worked as a team and we decided that FastBridge, which is a assessment we utilize three times a year already, would be the tool we would use. And so you see there for now, 1.1 goal or goal 1.1 has now been broken up into A and B. A representing reading FastBridge data and B representing math FastBridge data. You also see there that says a goal will be developed in spring of 2024. So when switching from kids and going to FastBridge, one of the things that I talked about with Don White, who we're working with on our goals and reporting on our goals, one of the things that he and I talked about was that to look at trends in data, you're going to want about three years of data. So we have FastBridge data that's consistent from 20, the 20, I haven't had any notes, from the 21, 22 school year, the 22, 23 school year, this past one, and then we'll have it for next year. And I say that's consistent because prior to the pandemic, we were not keeping track of our district data at a district level. We were keeping track of it school by school and it was done in different fashions. And so during the pandemic year, we were forced to revamp some of our data collection methods and we were able to have a more systematic, systematized way of collecting that data. So that's why it starts with the 21, 22 school year. And then we'll have three years at the end of next year, so we'll develop, we'll look at those trends and develop goals for reading and math and FastBridge. And that's why at the end of the school year, it says that it's not applicable in terms of whether or not we are meeting, approaching or exceeding that goal. For goal 1.2, that one is divided up into A and B as well. And that's not, it used to be one goal, but it combined ELA and math. And so what I've done with all the goals is made sure ELA and math are separated out. And so that's what this does. 1.2 is ELA for NWA map growth. And on the executive summary, you might remember the chart that showed the goals for each grade level. And 1.2B is for math NWA growth, which again, there's a chart on the executive summary that shows the goals for each grade level. And so you can see that based off of that, we are approaching in that area for the end, for the 22, 23 school year. And that's because when looking at our fall to spring growth for the 22, 23 school year, we saw that third, sixth, seventh and eighth grade met or exceeded the goal targets for ELA. And the second, fourth and fifth did not make the goal, goal targets for ELA. And then we saw that third and seventh made the goal targets for math, but second, fourth, fifth, sixth and eighth did not make the goal targets for math. As a leadership team, before school begins, we're going to dig into those ELA and math strands to determine areas for growth and a more detailed focus on what strands we're not seeing, we're seeing students not meeting growth targets in. We will look at vertical alignment, meaning we're going to look at, is it number and operations at all our elementary grades and then algebraic thinking at the junior high? Or is it geometry that's bringing our scores down and having students not meet growth? So we're going to look for what are the strands, what are the, at each grade level and determine if it's a vertical alignment piece or if it's sporadic pieces by grade level to then determine where we need more detailed focus, whether it's in small group instruction or it's professional learning for staff members and how we can better teach those topics. Or for math, if it's part of an implementation dip for our elementary students, knowing that we just started a new math curriculum where the terminology is different from what we used in Math and Focus to what we use now with iReady Math, where some of the structures and systems and what they were learning is restructured, re, the scope and sequence is slightly different between everyday math and, math and focus if there's an implementation dip that happened at the elementary level. These are all conversations we started at the end of the school year. And now all of our administrative schedules, all of our vacations are a little bit off, so some people are in town, some people aren't. But when we're all back in town together at the end of July, we'll start to dig into this together deeply. The two-day work we did with the empowered teens, we did start looking at some of this data and had a lot of questions for ourselves, asking ourselves why we see these things happening. It's, we, we're practicing root cause analysis where you're asking five whys. Why are math scores low? Well, because we have a new math curriculum. Why did the new math curriculum cause this? And so continuing to ask why to dig deeper. And we started that process at June and we'll continue that process when everybody returns. We'll also monitor those areas that we find during the fall math benchmarking, during our six-week checks and our winter benchmarking to determine if our students are showing growth in those areas with whatever types of interventions or processes we put in place. And with ELA, we'll do the same thing, but it's just math stands out to us right now because only two grade levels made the growth targets. 1.3A and 1.3B are looking at achievement in IAR. And so we set a goal for 64% of students meeting or exceeding grade level ELA expectations on the 2023 IAR assessment. And 64% of our students meeting or exceeding grade level math expectations on the 2023 Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the IAR assessment. We have preliminary data right now that districts receive from the state. That preliminary data just tells us right now who, all of our students and how they perform. So whether they exceeded, met, approached, did not yet meet, and there is a fourth, fifth level that I'm blanking out at the moment. But it just tells us that piece. It doesn't break it down and tell us strands and areas for growth yet. We don't get that piece till a few weeks into July. So right now, just looking at that preliminary data, and we have to go through and look at, are all of our students represented? Does everybody who took the test, does everyone have a score? If they don't have a score, why don't they have a score? So there's still some cleaning up of the data that districts and the state do before they calculate the actual meeting and exceeding percentage. But with the preliminary data, it looks as though 64%, about 64% of our students met or exceeded ELA. And then about 57% met or exceeded grade level expectations in math. So again, we see that math is showing up as an area for growth for us. But we did make it in ELA, so you see that we are meeting the standard for 1.3A, but 1.3B we did not meet. Principals did share the preliminary percentages with the grade levels. So every principal has their specific data for their school. They did sit with their grade levels and say for third grade, your current students, this is a percentage that met or exceeded standards. Let's talk about why you think that might have been, where do you think some of the troubles were? We will triangulate that data once we are able to look at the substrands for IAR. We'll triangulate that data with our math data and for math, we'll also use our, our iReady data. And we're going to continue to determine those areas for growth and areas to target for more targeted instruction. 1.4 was one large goal that focused on the high school placement for our students. And so 1.4A has been broken up into ELA, 1.4A and B have been broken up until ELA and 1.5A and B have been broken up into math. And so 1.4A looks at, beginning with 2023, 20, with the 2023, 24 school year, 33% of students who complete our ELA eight class, so that's our core ELA eight, core ELA class in eighth grade, that 33% of those students will achieve a level of success on the placement exam so that they're recommended for honors English nine at Riverside Brookfield High School. And then along with that, 90% of our students who complete the advanced ELA eighth class or advanced programming for eighth graders, 90% of those students will achieve a level of success on the placement test so that they are recommended for honors English nine. And where those numbers come from, in case you're not familiar, Riverside Brookfield High School has two English classes for ninth graders. You can either be in honors English nine or you can be in English nine. And so this year, we had students who performed, 81% of our advanced ELA students performed well enough on the placement exam to be recommended for honors English nine. So the other 18% were placed in. So the other 18% were placed in, recommended for English 9. Their non-Honors class. From our ELA 8 core class, we had 29% of those students recommended for Honors English 9. So you don't have to be an Advanced ELA in District 96 to get into Honors English in Riverside Brookfield High School. And that's where these goals go and that's what they're showing for English, that we would expect a third of our students who are in our core ELA class should still be able to get into Honors English 9. And that 90% of the students who are in our Advanced ELA class, at least 90% should be able to get into Honors English 9. So that's where 1.4A and 1.4B come from. Similarly, likewise, 1.5A and 1.5B look at our math classes. Math at RB is a little bit different in that they have five different paths for math classes for 9th graders. So you can be in Honors Geometry, you can be recommended for Honors Geometry, you can be recommended for Honors Algebra, or Algebra, or Algebra with Academic Support, or Extended Algebra, or PreAlgebra. So there are six different levels that students are recommended for based off the placement exam. And so what we would like to see is two-thirds of the students who are in our core math class, Math 8, will achieve a level of success on the placement exam so that they're recommended for Honors Algebra. There are times that students who are in Core Math 8, the Math 8 core class, there are times that they have gotten into Honors Geometry over the past years. That did not happen with our previous 8th grade group. The other thing about our 8th grade core class is that it represents a large spectrum of students. It's all types of students who might be high achieving, high average students who didn't place into Advanced Math 8. And it also might be students who, in Math 8, who have an IEP for mathematics and have like maybe a specific learning disability in the area of math. So it's a large spectrum of students who are in Math 8. And that's why we look at two-thirds of that group would be able to qualify for Honors Algebra, where the other third then would be divided out among the other four classes, the Algebra, Algebra with Academic Support, Extended Algebra, and PreAlgebra. This year, we had 43% of our students in the Core Math 8 class who were recommended off of their placement for Honors Algebra. Then for our students who are in Advanced Math, we'd like to see 90% of those students achieve a level of success on the placement exam so that they're recommended for Honors Geometry. This year, 86% of our students were recommended for Honors Geometry. So we'd like to see that number increase to at least 90% beginning with this upcoming school year. The one thing I do want to point out is that students take a placement exam, it's the PSAT 8 exam. They take that in October, the results from that, then give them a score and RB takes those scores and that's how they recommend students for placement. What they do then is they send those recommendations to the Hauser Principal and Assistant Principal. And they work with the teachers to look at those recommendations and determine if that's really the proper placement for students. And then if they see any changes that should be made, they will go and make adjustments. So while I have the numbers for students who were recommended for certain levels, I do want the board to know that we go back through and we actually changed at least 25 of those placements. And RB has accepted all of those changes. So we do have students who might have been recommended for something like Algebra with Academic Support. And the teachers know those students, know that maybe they have test anxiety and that's not how they truly perform and they're really high achieving in the classroom and just struggle with testing. And they were actually placed in Honors Algebra. So when we look at the KPI, it's looking at how they're achieving on the placement exam because that's what we're teaching them for, is how they're going to perform on these exams that will then determine, help determine their pathway. But I also would like the board to know that that's not the only thing that determines their pathway. Teachers here at Hauser do have a say in where students are recommended for the upcoming year.
That's a big deal that they trust us to make that recommendation and give that input.
Absolutely. And that's why I wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
To piggyback on that, so are they giving us feedback? If any of those, I think you said 25 students, did not succeed the way that we thought? Are we going to track that in any way? Just to make sure that we're not pushing people faster than they should be?
So that's part of what we're working on. And what, through the strategic plan, what we've realized with some of the communication is just how are we communicating how our students are doing?
Yeah.
That was how the KPI goal originally started, was that we were going to have some conversations. But there are some behind the scenes work we have to do with data security, privacy issues and intergovernmental agreements and sharing the data. And so we're working towards that. It would be my hope that we would have that in place for next year, but it's a continued work in progress.
Yeah. My only thought there is we have a very clear black and white goal. And I would hate for the district to make recommendations to push people and then we push them too hard just so that we meet a goal. And I'm not saying that that would happen, that's not our intent, I get all that. But just to say it very clearly, I don't want to push people faster than they need just so that we can hit a number on this scorecard.
And that's a great point. But that's why I do want to point out the goals are about how they place on the, how they're recommended based off their placement scores.
Okay.
So the goal is before we have a say in anything. It's looking at just black and white, how they do on the test.
Perfect. Okay.
Thanks for that clarification, because I was thinking the exact same thing.
Yes.
And just for some historical context, because I'm new, how were these targets set?
That's a wonderful question. So I'm going to start with math. The math targets were set by looking at where we were at, what the average for each cohort was for their performance. So for instance, when looking at our, the 8th graders from this past year, I looked at their performance on map from 2nd grade up through 7th grade, looked at their average performance for those years, that included the pandemic years, and then set what was a stretch goal, but still achievable, should be achievable. I will say in talking with our NWA rep and talking to her about looking for next year's targets, and also she was working with me on looking at some of the reasons why certain grade levels didn't meet their growth targets. And talking with her, she actually suggested that I wait until the fall to set our goal for next year because growth, meeting a growth projection means that you are working towards maintaining your achievement. So if your achievement is at the 53rd percentile for a grade level, the growth projection is just can we maintain that 53rd percentile? It's not looking at can we grow an achievement? It's not looking at how are we doing in achievement? It's just can we maintain that 53rd percentile? So for next year's NWA goal, I'm going to work with her closely so that not only are we looking at maintaining the achievement, but if the achievement's low to begin with, we also want to look at growing. So we're going to want more people to grow in their growth percentiles. So that's how NWA was determined. IAR was determined based off of looking at historical IAR performance and where we were at. And again, looking at a number that was a stretch but attainable. We were, after the pandemic, our math exceeding and meeting targets, students who met or exceeded had dropped significantly after the pandemic. And so I did mention that getting to 64% would be a little bit of a stretch. But it was something like, we're just, we've, usually before the pandemic, we were in the 80s with our performance. And so I wanted to stretch us because we want to get back to pre-pandemic scores. So it's looking at, all of these goals are looking at past trends. That's why we're not setting the FastBridge data yet. It's looking at past trends to determine what's a reasonable stretch goal that's going to help us get to our target of being back to the high performing district we were pre-pandemic.
Thanks.
And also I'll just add that we had brought this to the board in the fall. And so the board essentially approved the key performance indicators for the strategic plan overall.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for goal one?
I would, I would just add to that, Selena, the very first year was a total stab in the dark. I mean, like Angela, not a total stab in the dark. It was a bit of a stab in the dark. We, we took an assessment, Angela put a lot of thought into it and said, with everything going on, here's where I think we should be essentially. And so we just said like, okay. And then as you kind of mentioned with Don, I didn't track all the numbers that you threw at me, but like the three years of data and like, so we know that some of this is just going to kind of take time to build out. So this is really only, I'd say it's like our first like true year of like really in it and not just trying to figure it out. But I think some of this is still up for change.
Yeah, I think that was the, the target in year one of the plan, which was really last school year, sort of draft some KPIs. If you recall, like even on that placemat that we have, they were, they were sort of recommended to us by Catalyst for Educational Change. They weren't really the ones that we adopted. Then this year, we really adopted these as our key performance indicators. So this is really our first formal report out around using the scorecard.
And then based on that, you clearly made a lot of observations on how to make it more targeted and better, which I fully appreciate. So I'm looking at this as the 23, 24 year will really be our first like dedicated year in this model of like clear data. But actually, that was one of the questions I had. So will we, in these NAs where we need some of that data with all the years that you, past years you threw out, are we now going to have enough years or do we need?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
So for 23, 24, we should have dots in those.
Yes. Yep. For 1.4 and 1.5, we'll have dots in those columns. 1.1, we will not have dots yet because the goal's not going to be written until we, at the end of the year when we have that end of the year data.
Gotcha. Okay. We're almost there.
We're almost there.
All right. And then one last question I have. When you're talking about the 1.2 goals and you listed a number of grades that met and a number that didn't, I'm assuming that's not all of 2nd grade and all of 3rd grade. So how is the 4th grade teacher getting 3rd grade students that didn't meet thinking about that classroom compared to a 4th grade teacher that got a 3rd grade? Well, I guess they're not all the same. How are we thinking about that as a transition? You're like, okay, these 3rd graders aren't here, but these 3rd graders are here and whatever. Like that feels like maybe a little bit of a challenge. I'm just kind of curious how we're thinking about that.
NWA has different reports that we can look at. And so the reports that they end up looking at, you can look by individual students, you can look by whole classes, you look by different subject areas. So we have different reports that a classroom teacher can look at to see how a student's and how their group are performing with growth and achievement. And so one of the ones that I know teachers and principals really like to go to is what they call a quadrant report, which will show four quadrants and it shows high growth, high achievement, low growth, low, or high, high growth, high achievement, low growth, high achievement, low growth, low achievement, high growth, low achievement. So it shows those four quadrants and they're able to see then how have students been performing over time. The, that's the other reason why our representative from NWA was saying we should wait till the fall to set the goals because then we're looking at how are students performing within that group, within those students in that cohort, to then make a goal for those students to meet by the end of the year. Any other goal line questions? I'm going to turn it over to Nora.
Thanks, Allison. She hung in longer than I thought. All right. Goal two has fewer components than goal one. So I'll move through them. And similar to goal one, you'll see some NAs here where we're still waiting for the, in, for example, 2.1, for three years of kind of post-pandemic attendance data. I will say, we have this year's attendance data just came in hot off the presses this week. And we are holding steady with where we were last year, which is great. But it's, our goal is written specifically for that three-year average at the building and the grade levels. We don't have it broken down in grade levels yet. So that one, we'll continue, we're continuing to gather data. 2.2, the original statement here was that a SMARTY goal will be written in spring of 2023. As you know, we had the PAST pupil attitudes to, towards self in school survey that students completed this year for the first time in fall and spring. And so looking at the results of that across those two administrations, generated a goal to say that in the past administration in spring of 2024, the district will maintain or improve the by-building average results from the spring 2023 past student survey data for the following three subscales, feelings about school, attitudes to teachers, and attitudes to attendance. PAST provides results across nine subscales. These three are identified as the ones that are most connected to, are most indicative of that feeling of connection and acceptance in the school setting. And so that's what we are going to look at as a starting point, but keeping in mind our goal two of cultivating a safe and secure and inclusive learning environment that's responsive to all students. So we will have data to report on that in the spring of next year, at this time next year. Because we are going to be administering that again, fall and spring next year. The other thing I just want to point out is that this is the goal we've written for the past, you know, as a measure of accountability for ourselves. It's not the only way that data is used at the school and at the building and classroom level too. It is giving us some information just about, you know, groups of students in schools, grade levels that, you know, 5th grade you can see and that spring administration gets, they get as much as they're all trying to play it cool, I think, and say I'm ready for junior high. There's a little bit of a spike in anxiety then. So we are using it at that building level too. This is just the kind of overall goal to make sure that we're looking at improving these things or maintaining performance across these three areas. And then 2.3, the district's SEL action team will annually, annually complete the CASL survey for systemic district approach and will maintain or improve the results collected from last spring's survey data in the areas of shared vision plan and SEL professional learning. And so for those two areas, shared vision plan, all of these components in this rubric, the CASL rubric that's referenced, are on a scale of one to four. In shared vision plan, the group moved their rating from a two to a three that kind of documented that we, as a district, there's more evidence that we have a shared vision for what SEL is in District 96. And then SEL professional learning, we moved from a 2.5 to a 3.5. So we did see growth in both of those areas. What I want to highlight for next year in this, in 2.3, is that our SEL action team will likely pick two other, you know, one to two other areas to look for growth in. This is a rubric that is pretty extensive. These are two kind of the starting area subscales. But when we meet in the fall, that will be one of our tasks is to set a goal for ourselves for that school year. So it will still be related to that CASL survey for systemic district approach to SEL instruction. But it will probably not be shared vision plan and SEL professional learning because we're, the ball is moving on those. We want to keep it moving in other areas as well. Any questions about goal two?
Can you, since CASL is an acronym?
Yes.
Can we just explain?
Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning.
And that is just a, is that like, I always mix this up. It's like an industry standard type thing?
Yeah, it's an organization that, that is kind of the industry standard for, they are kind of the clearinghouse for social, emotional learning, materials, research, best practices, program evaluation. So they're just, they're kind of the go-to in the area of social, emotional learning for elementary districts.
Thank you.
Marsha, do you think, sort of going forward, do you think we can start just listing out the acronyms?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. We could change that. I know we have our little glossary of acronyms. I'm not sure CASL's in there. We should put it in there. But also it'd be good to write it out.
Because I'm also, like the PAST.
Yeah.
Yeah, I must have meant I was Googling something myself here.
I apologize.
I just Googled CASL and it pops up pretty quick.
Yeah, CASL's up there. PAST probably is a little harder to uncover because it's a little bit, it's not at the same level as CASL, but.
Thank you for keeping us on those. We think we're, we think we're so good at trying to reduce them and there's always, there's, I realize.
And they're probably sold out on one document, but you know, but yeah, we'll get that in there. Anything else?
Thank you. Do you need a navigator? I guess she's only got the one slide.
Oh.
Your clicker working? You don't need to change anything?
I already changed. Okay, well, I'm reporting out on goal three, which is high quality staff. And the goal is focused on recruiting, developing, and retaining exceptional personnel for all positions. So the eight goal, well, seven goals plus one was we're looking to possibly develop one for 3.8. So 3.1 was that the district would maintain or increase the percentage of teachers with a master's degree or higher at a three year rolling average, as reported by the Illinois State Board of Education report card. So that data is easy enough to find, and we were able to compare the the rolling averages. And we did have a slight increase in the amount of staff that had master's degrees. It was, you know, three one three one hundredths of a percent, but it's still, we hit it and we gained a little. And I think what what that what that goal will hopefully indicate in terms of growth in that is that, well, that our staff are staying and that they are getting their master's degree as they as they stay, that that is moving forward and that we're developing staff in that those that don't have their masters will, you know, also obtain that if they if they haven't already. Goal 3.2 and 3.3, we're really looking at our hiring and recruiting practices. And these, you know, these we, you know, we scored as kind of an approaching because we this year was very much an audit year. In order to really make changes to your practices, you really have to understand them. And so this year was very much a discovery year of of looking at our hiring and recruitment practices, digging into how we how we post, the questions we ask when we post, where do we disseminate information that, you know, how are we actually, who are we contacting regarding, are we publicizing our job openings? And then in terms of of the actual hiring process, is what are our processes in terms of are we, what types of questions are we asking in the interview process? And so these are all things that there's really no, we don't have a binder or a set of of standards that we're currently using. But that in and of itself, we identified that, well, that's probably a need that we want to make sure that across the district, and especially since the the bulk of our interviews are conducted by our principals, that that there is consistency across the schools or at least, you know, our elementaries and at the and where there can be overlap at the junior high, but that the the interview questions and that their processes are exact, if not extremely close. So the the discovery, the things that we went through in terms of looking at, there were some areas that kind of some low hanging fruit for some possible, you know, changes moving forward. They were presented at our district leadership team, all very changes. Everyone was receptive to the changes. But now we have to kind of operationalize some of those things and and really pull together some of the things that are already out there, pooling resources that maybe principals are currently using, and making sure that we are, we establish that level of consistency across the schools. So in terms of recruiting, we did look at, you know, really started to establish relationships with area colleges that we didn't have before and just getting on their job boards. And then we've revised our our job posting site to just kind of reflect a more more inclusive culture here in in terms of the language. We're also looking at, well, what language are we using within how we publicize, promote the district? And and that reflects who we are, which is a, you know, a great place to work. So with in these two areas, a lot of it was identifying, okay, these are some changes that we want to make. Now we have to really operationalize it because it will fall on someone to actually do this. We want to make sure that the things that we do put in place, we don't want it to be burdensome. We want to make, we want to automate as much as possible. And that's what we'll be really focusing on the next six months as we kind of really gear up for that next hiring season, which begins really after January 1 of of this of next year. The next area, the 3.4, 85% of all employees who voluntarily choose to leave the district will be invited to participate in an exit interview survey with the district office as administrator. And this we did change a little bit in that we changed it to a survey as opposed to necessarily a face to face interview. Now, I know Martha did some face to face interviews with a few individuals who are leaving the district. The the survey obviously allows us to make sure we at least offer the opportunity to provide feedback to everybody. And it's also in an anonymous format, which then you also you you hope that you you get some 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 good, honest feedback. So we were actually, anybody who left the district voluntarily, we were able to provide them with a survey. The survey was developed using questions from the Society of Human Resources manager, SHRM. They had an exit interview survey, largely open ended questions. But so we took the questions and we used, made it so that it was more, where possible, using an appropriate Likert scale to to answer the questions because we also also wanted to respect the fact that we didn't want it to be overly burdensome, especially somebody leaving that we want, we'd like the information. So of the seven people that we provided, we got four that responded and a lot of good information in there. And I think some of the information that was provided reinforces some of the direction that, you know, we're looking to make with some changes internally within within goal three. So it but but all good information. So with that, because we were able to really offer it to 100%, said, well, we're actually able, we're able to cast a wider net in making sure that everybody had the opportunity to to fill it. I think where this also benefits is that in the instance of the, we had an opening that a teacher resigned the last day of of school. So this is, well, how are you going to capture that information? You know, arranging an interview that this accounts to make sure that you can at least get that information from everybody as well. 3.5 is really just the superintendent will annually report the aggregate data of those certified employees and the data for support staff employees that is collected from the exit interviews as long as the number exceeds six participants, which we had four, which we can report some of that out. It's still, it's good information, but we do have, we have the data collected. 3.6, the district will maintain a regionally competitive level of total compensation for both certified, for well, certified and professional certified and paraprofessional employee groups. The non certified is a little bit more difficult to to really track across across the districts. But with that, we, in terms of the salary comparisons that we just did within the the whiskey districts, and that's the West Suburban Consortium for Academic Excellence.
Thank you.
We we were in that meaty part of the bell curve in terms of the the salaries that we were looking at, starting salary in that first, you know, if they had a salary schedule like that bachelor's, you know, one, you know, you're no, you know, just starting salary. That's we were using it because the salary schedules can differ very much across across the districts and the types of schedules. 3.7, for district provided professional development sessions for certified employees, the district will maintain or increase the annual combined percentage of participants who select ratings of strongly agree or agree while decreasing the number of participants who select the rating of degree of disagree on on two rating items. That the professional development will impact my social and emotional growth or student social and emotional growth. And the other area was that the professional development will impact my professional growth or student growth in regards to content, knowledge, or skills, or both. Now, to give this a little bit of context, at the end of every professional development session, staff are provided the same survey. I mean, every every single session. And so we were looking, and it's a Illinois State Board of Education kind of boilerplate survey that needs to be, you know, if you're doing it's for, if it's accredited.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's for CPD, for professional development credit. So we focused on two of those areas of the questions that we ask. So within that, we had some some very good movement from the from the disagree into the agree or strongly agree in both of those. And we had, so from, and we looked at the aggregate data from last year to this year. So from last year to this year, overall, in the first area, which was this professional development will impact my social emotional growth or student social and emotional growth. Overall, it was almost 8%, 7.8% with 4.5% at the elementary and almost 16% at the at the middle school. Okay. And then on the in the other area, this professional development will impact my professional growth or student growth in regards to content, knowledge, or skills, or both. Again, looking at aggregate data from last year versus this year, elementary school was up 10.3% and the middle school was up 23.6% in terms of moving from the the disagree and somewhat agree total over to the agree to strongly agree with overall 14.3% on that one. And then the last, the last area with 3.8, we were, we're looking at the the baseline pulse check, pulse check and end of year survey with the vital network survey that we do. And we were, we really looked at the data from last year and this year and had a difficult time coming up with, well, what would the goal be? And Martha, I don't know if you want to, I know we met with.
Nate Eklund.
Nate Eklund from from the Eklund, well, now.
Now Vital Network.
Vital Network.
Right. And that's part of the problem is they changed their survey tool from the initial year of implementation. So then we have different, a different survey tool, still collecting the data, still looking at our building level teams examining the data. This is, it's, I mean, there's numeric data, but it is still soft data in terms of measuring climate and culture. So again, wanting to make the best use of that. And I see that sort of our our best sort of indicators that this goal is still in development.
Yeah, we're still looking for something to really latch on to with that. Any questions?
Maybe just a little recognition on 3.7. That's huge. So kudos to whoever put all that, the teams, the person, the people, the whatever that put that PD content together. And just personally, I I latched on to that because I remember with contract negotiations, this was something that we talked about, was like increasing professional development, making it more meaningful, making it more, you know, whatever, just better. And so that's, that's huge.
Yeah, that was.
For those two things, that's really big. So good job.
Yeah. Kudos to Angela. She organizes and yeah, and Pam and Nora.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because yeah, I recall as well, there definitely were, those numbers weren't as good as they are now. So it's good to see them get that, get to get to exceeds even.
And then I I'm making kind of an assumption. So I'm going to ask the question, are we going to change those to focus on different things that we were going to, as we talk about evolving professional development with different needs, whether it be math or reading or science or whatever, are we thinking 3.7 will hone in on those areas where we're targeting like a year long type thing? Or are we going to keep these? Or have you gotten in the car and thinking about that?
Well, one thing that has come up, and what I think we could could possibly benefit from is, I mean, there are the questions that are asked of that ISB survey that those are the ones you have to use. It doesn't mean you can't include others.
Okay.
And so I think to modify the survey to really to really like, okay, what what info, what other information do we want that maybe the questions that ISB is providing us doesn't give us a level of depth that we want? What questions, you know, could we add one or two that might give us, you know, more insight?
Okay.
And I think that second one in particular, and the SEL one also, but the professional development will impact my professional growth or student growth in regard to content, knowledge, skills. I think it's meant to be broad enough, right? That like you answer that every time you do a professional learning session. So I think we're also trying to target ones that would like be somewhat universal and be meaningful to us. We get all the other more granular feedback as well, but from a, you know, KPIs, what goes on the scorecard.
Yeah.
We get a lot of individual comments. So again, I think our thought was maybe these would carry us through moving forward. But these are like the biggies kind of.
Right.
Yeah. So I was looking at it in a more narrow lens. So if we, if we're looking at the whole umbrella of stuff that fit under there, then I'm fine with that. I was just curious if we were thinking about updating or changing or not.
But I think that I just wrote, like, should there be others? I think it's a good question. We'll review it. I think initially we picked, they were like global.
Right. No, they're, yeah, they were.
Feedback.
Right. And we're, that's something that we have traditionally given on every one of them. So it was also historically, there was data there, too. But I think it also, you know, whether it's a part of an actual KPI, just to be able to gather additional data, which I think that helps to, you know, maybe, you know, whether it's, you know, support a direction you're going or, you know, support, hey, maybe we need to make a change.
Yeah.
Or in, and especially, I think, when you have a new initiative, you know, if you're doing something new, do you want feedback on?
Yeah.
On that.
But and to your point on a couple of these, you you can't make it burdensome. You can't make it cumbersome. It has to be easy. It has to be quick. Or every time I, every time I talk to somebody, they want a survey after it, right? It's like, no, we're it. So we gotta, we need the data. That's the easy way to get it. But it's got to be easy and.
Right.
And effective for for somebody to fill out. So. Any others? Okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right. And I'm going to take goal four. The family and community partnerships goal of building a strong support system by engaging families, partners, and the greater community to meet the needs of all students. And we've talked about over the course of this year, this one has a nebulous quality to it. But the the specific measurable part that we really took on this year was to administer that survey. So we administered a family engagement survey with the idea being that the survey would really help us identify some target goal areas. So what I've attached for the board is an overview of the work that the committee did this school year as a way of kind of sharing, sharing some areas that we're focused on and that may then add to becoming more measurable goals and objectives for the coming year. So if you look under the scorecard there, there's a family community partnerships and credit goes to Sarah Hickey, my action team partner in all of this and trying to sort of provide an update on the kinds of work that we were doing. So as you know, we administered the survey and we decided that really the survey would be administered every other year. We don't look to administer the survey annually. I think the key question we asked ourselves is, is this meaningful and actionable enough that we would want to and need to do every year? And I think we felt that there's very good information to come from it, but it's information that we can continue to use this coming year and then survey on an every other year cycle. Again, the focus on family events and in particular, hosting a family math night. So looking at other family learning events moving forward. And again, one of our targets could even be something like attendance at those events. Just making sure we're engaging more families. Parent information nights is also another target area. And then we looked at some specific district wide efforts in engaging families and kind of a one to one process. And I know Marla was looking to do that at Hollywood in her dual role of board member now and family community partnerships action team member as she got started with us and actually on the strategic plan team, too. And then just looking at, in particular, taking a closer look at the transition from elementary school to middle school. There has been a long history of an outdoor education plan where kids go on overnight field trip. I know we've talked about that here at the board table as well. That had kind of fallen away during the pandemic, but have been able to reinstate that now for the coming year. Also, there's an a strong tradition here in this community of a fifth grade games night where kids from all four elementary schools come together and have a social opportunity games, et cetera. And this year, we. And this year, we also, April, May, and Chris Harvales added an informational component for families as well. So again, looking at some of the traditional things that are already going on in District 96, how can we enhance them? How can we make sure that they really have an identified purpose? And then how can we refine that purpose? So any questions about goal four? It's a tricky one. It's a tricky one to measure.
Yep.
Goal five.
Hi, for goal five. We've got the KPIs up there. The first one is to maintain a 4.0 reading with Illinois State Board of Education, and we did that. It was published in our last audit. We're working on next year's budget right now and the CPI was actually 7%, but the, the revenues for property taxes are capped at 5%. So when we put this goal together, we weren't really thinking that CPI would go so high. But we want to, so we want to keep it under what our revenues are increasing, and that was kind of the spirit of the goal. And we, we will be under 5%. It looks closer to 4%. 5.3, our facility projects, so far they're on time and within budget. And I haven't heard of anything surprising going on this summer.
Good. We've got any more?
5.4 is handling facility work orders and we're on our way to our goal to respond to each one within one business day. And we've made improvements in that area, but we've got a little ways to go. 5.5 is a five-year technology plan that's in process and the goal is to be equal or better than the five-year rolling average of CPI, so to control our costs over a five-year plan. 5.6 is the technology work orders and the response time is on track and actually exceeding the goal of responding to each one in less than a day. Any questions on the KPIs for goal five?
What goes into the challenges of the maintenance, repair, and improvement requests?
Those work orders?
Yes.
I don't know how to say this, but the technology people are a little quicker at answering work orders with technology and.
Than doing physical things.
Then it's a different skill set and they've been at it for a year, but we're, we're improving our technology skills in that department.
Communication labs and harm is exactly what you pointed out, the people that are responding to the maintenance ones are busy doing maintenance, their custodial work and stuff.
Their tendence is to run out and fix it.
Not that our tech people aren't running around a lot to down that.
It's a fair answer.
But with a technology device often in their hands.
Thank you.
Sure.
And that is it for all five goal areas updated through the scorecard. And Wesley, as you pointed out, this is a, a new process for us to, to utilize something as formatted and as explicit as this and would, would love sort of board feedback, if not tonight, just in general, but sort of how, how does the process overall, you know, sort of feels to, to all of you?
For me, I think I, I gave you a very short reply. I like it in email when you gave us the preview, but I think, just thinking as a community member, being able to come here to say, this is what we're trying to achieve and here's a general indication of where we're at in that achievement, I think is really good. And then all of this detail, you can either listen to this meeting or whatever meeting and we've got other materials out here. So I think if you want the details, we'll have it. I think there's a couple other things that got brought up where I'm wondering, okay, as a community member, where do I go to find these details? But we can hash that out later. But I think overall, I really like this, well, what was up there, scorecard visual for it. And I'm probably a little biased because we use scorecards like this at my, at work all the time for everything because it's the easiest way to just understand the content. You don't, well, you don't really need to understand the content, you just red, green, yellow, everybody kind of knows what that means. So I, I like it. I think it's a great addition to what we have and we'll continue evolving it. But I don't know if there are any other opinions that would be stated out loud today.
Just as, as we're looking over five, I wonder if there's some, some other areas that might be covered next year because it just kind of seems like overall district management is what I'm getting the flavor of that.
Yeah, and I think it's a good question. It's interesting, I think, because maybe maintenance and even with technology, I think those are areas where there's been a lot of systems improvements. And so they did sit in some broad district goals to sort of improve. And I don't know if you're saying like that doesn't feel as meaning.
No, 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 honestly, it just with, you know, we've been, we've been bringing more focus on food service recently, so it just seems like that when I'm getting to the end of it, I'm like, oh yeah, maybe that's something that needs to be added for next year.
Actually, I think, because one of the things where I know have been sort of already started to sort of wonder and hypothesize about is, will there be an increase or, you know, what will be the numbers, right, of number of children that will get the school lunch? Because I think that's going to be one of those we'll determine if it's worthwhile.
Yeah, that definitely could be something worth, worth hearing about and discussing. I guess another impression I have, and I'm not sure what we do about it, but it seems like out of all the five goals, the first one is so much more substantive and there's so much more to discuss that kind of outweighs the discussion of the rest. It's really, the rest of it is overshadowed by that first goal and I'm not sure that that's a problem, but that's just definitely something I've noted.
Yeah. Are you saying as far as like having this conversation on a regular basis, it's, or?
It's just there's so much to take in with that first goal, I think.
Yeah. All right, so I guess I'll just say what I'm thinking instead of trying to fish for it. So the way we had kind of been doing it, and I guess this would probably be a question of do we want to continue to do it this way? We've been, there's like certain benchmarks with the testing and when the results come in, we took, trying to, we did this a couple of different ways as we were trying to figure it out, but we tried to chunk it out based on when the timing makes sense of different things and each of these goals has a slightly different alignment. So as we're thinking through the committee of the whole meetings each month, do we, do we want to schedule another rotation like we did last year?
Yeah, so we're, we're planning.
Instead of all of it.
Right, to schedule a rotation, but the rotation's kind of being goals one and two, three, four, five. And then what really started to happen over the course of last year, and I think it naturally happens, is there's things like, for example, you'll be looking at the fiscal 24, fiscal year 24 budget, whether finance is a sort of rotation or not, we need to get to finance, right? So when it's, when it's time to look at the new budget. November is always the time that the state report grade gets released in late October, so November has sort of historically and for good reason been the time that the board takes a very close look at the student achievement presentation. But we, we do want to keep the rotation up. I think we, you know, we kind of just will interrupt the rotation when there's something specific that has a key timeline that where we may need to have a more specific board conversation. The rotation seems to make sense. Yes, goal one is the mediest. It, it should be, it should be, right? So, but if we're saying we want to chunk just how we look at these aspects of goal one, is that?
Maybe, I'm not, I'm not an educational professional, obviously, so it, it seems like some, some of these other goals are a little bit easier for me to grasp. And, and maybe fleshing out some of those acronyms might help that out some.
Yeah.
I got you, because I was just going to clarify. So what I, when you said that, I was assuming like, boy, this is a lot of information, let's not try to take it in all the time.
Well, it is, it definitely is, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But yes, I agree with you. None of us, most, most of us are not academic professionals, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's think about that, Angela, we can think about that, we can consult with Don White and overall in our Living the Plan. I mean, some districts will set like, you know, the IAR, the, you know, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, that's the big benchmark test. We also do put a lot of weight, obviously, in terms of how we're problem solving and using data around MAP data, but then we want to certainly speak to kindergarten because it was, was new for us. And then we really want to make sure that our articulation with the high school, I think even just by the description we were sharing, like some of it, yes, the numbers matter, but really what matters is that if there's a way to enhance our communication with the high school, that's important too. So, yeah, it's hard to say like what, what doesn't, you know.
There's so much there, it's great information. And I, I don't want to say, don't give it to us because it's definitely great. It's just, I, I don't know if there's a way to make it a little bit more accessible.
Yeah.
To someone at my, talk to me like I'm a four-year-old or whatever it is, I guess.
And this comprehensive data is, if you, if you think back to like the, this past year, comprehensive data is what's usually reported when you do our goal one, two, three, four, five reports. It's more, this is what this committee is working on. So you'll hear from standard space rating reporting, what the work we're doing on that is in the upcoming school year. You'll hear about our work with equity and opportunity gaps. You'll hear, you probably won't hear as much about full day kindergarten anymore as we move into the second year of full day kindergarten. So it's less number oriented, except for that November report, which is going to be the student achievement report. And it's more just, here's the actions we're working on with the strategic plan. This was a little bit more media, more number oriented because it was a scorecard report. And so that's, that piece will come up at the end of the year, but I'll definitely work with our team and with Don White on how we can make it more accessible too.
I really appreciate the way that it was presented and, you know, to what you spoke to earlier about really digging into some of the whys that are driving this performance, I think, is a really important conversation that we, as the board, need to have and need to understand so that way we can allocate resources in, in the best way so we can achieve these goals, right?
Completely agree. That makes a lot of sense.
And so maybe it's not about simplifying it, but making sure that we really speak to the meaningfulness of it. You know, I think you did, Angela, right? I think you all did, but.
Yeah, that kind of shifted my thinking on this because I remember we had one meeting where all we talked about was we need a science update, we need a science curriculum update and here's what we're going to do about it and we'll follow up with you later. And that was it. So taking like, having some of those flashbacks, this was really more of that, this is sort of that year-end fiscal, whatever we want to call it, how did we do this year? And then, yeah, okay. So for this meeting per se, the June meeting or whatever, we'll probably have this more comprehensive, numbers-oriented, did we accomplish, what did we not accomplish, why for what we know? And then what I heard everybody say was, or at least for your academic stuff and the SEL stuff, we're going to assess that over the summer, so then we'll probably have a kickoff that's not as detailed as this, but just the overview of, okay, here's what we did over the summer, which would be appropriate because we're not going to meet again until, till that time. But then it'll just be the little pieces of the moving target and then we'll recap it at the end of the year. So this might not feel quite as cumbersome as we're going through it. There just was a lot to go through today.
And maybe we can also think about sort of the highlights. I think of the conversation we just had when we did the empowered teams work, we were talking about output versus outcomes, you know, and this idea of, this is, these are the targets we've set, they're very meaningful. It sounds like also what, what you found to be meaningful are, are more of like, what did we really learn by setting these targets, right?
Yep.
So, yeah.
It'll always continue to evolve and improve as we come up with other ideas, so I agree with you, Dan, it is a lot, and there's a lot here, but as we're evolving into this, hopefully it won't feel as much as we get more used to it too, so.
But your feedback really does matter. I mean, this is, it is for the board, it is for the district, and we will post this on our website. I know we're in the process of cleaning up our website a bit, right, Don? So maybe we wait for that process to be finished, but we have a strategic plan tab. I think the scorecard belongs there, the updated KPIs belong there.
News item.
News item, yeah.
Yeah, and then the only other layer I would just have to have some consideration is with, with some of the data that we can make public, how do we, could we make this interactive to like click here for the details or something like that? I don't know, but how do we make it, how do we make the information, like why is that yellow, why is that green, why is that blue? How do we make that more transparent where we can without being cumbersome and all that for anybody that wants it? This is very good. I appreciated all the information. It sounds like those that have made other comments appreciate it as well.
Absolutely.
Anything else before we move on? Talk about our favorite core topic of policy. Okay, thank you for all of the goal champions, I think is what we're calling them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, right. The goal champions. Okay, uh, next agenda item is policy and the policy committee chair is not with us tonight, so I'll just throw this out. Press plus number 111, update memo. We talked about this at the last meeting, no major changes that I saw or we were notified of, so this is all the same content that we had before. Is there a motion to, for the Board of Education to approve the second reading and approval of press, press plus number 11, policies as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about any of the policy items on here? Nope. Okay, so Kathy, could you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Class?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barzadi?
Aye.
Mr. Barf.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That is the end of old business. We have no new business for today. Is there any public comment?
None.
Nope, okay. So then we will not be formally meeting for the rest of this summer. The July 5th meeting is canceled due to the Fourth of July holiday. The July 19th meeting, we are canceling due to no significant board action or discussion that is anticipated to be necessary. We can always change that if something pops up. So then our next meeting will be August 2nd for the Committee of the Whole in the multipurpose room at Ames, and that is all we have for tonight, so the meeting is adjourned.